To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll.
Alderman Tobin.
Here.
Alderman Jean Francois.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderwoman Ray.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green. Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
Quorum's present.
Approval of minutes. Motion by Alderman Massey.
Second.
Alderman Witt. Alderman Kleiner.
Thank you. One correction to the minutes. I believe it's on page nine. For the good of this city, there's a long, very positive comment, and it says Speaker unknown, and that speaker would be our friend, Mr. Kevin Gomez, who's also here tonight. So with that correction.
No problem. Anyone else make the correction?
Sir.
Roll. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Correspondence?
Nothing this evening.
All right. For the good of the city, anyone who'd like to address the council, please step forward.
Good evening. Your Honor, the mayor, President Rodriguez, members of the common council. I happen to have been at the last county legislative meeting. Oh, thank you.
You were unknown.
So you know my name. Kevin Gomez, resident of Ward Two. I was at the last legislative meeting of the county last week, and words that came to my mind are the words the same polls writing to Timothy. The labor is worthy of his wages. We had the county workers that came to express their concern and frustration because of the lack of a contract or unfair wages. Many of them work in overtime, work in sometimes some of them even taking away from their vacation. We heard of probation officers, particularly female probation officers who don't have the proper equipment or will provide the necessary services when they may be expecting a child. I think that even though that's within the purview of the county level, that we lend our support to our workers. They are the movers and shakers. They are the ones that make our governments move, and they are worthy of fair and sound salaries. So I certainly support them, and I believe we should all stand in support of our county workers. And it's my hope that the county administration will grant them a fair contract, which is what they deserve, and their labor has proved them. Again, I see these workers every day. They are our friends. They are our neighbors. They are the ones that make things work. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for the county update. Anyone else who'd like to address the county? All right. Wish you'd do anything.
Maybe I should go to the county.
All right. Let's move over to remarks of the mayor. All right. That's even better. Economic development.
Make sure you state your name for the record, just in case.
Or your broomie? Good evening, everyone. Just to update you on some Paramount stuff, we have the ABBA Tribute Group this Saturday. Tickets are very strong. We have a great lineup coming up for the rest of the spring season and summer, and we're also going to be announcing Sheila E. is going to be coming to the Paramount end of June. She's the queen of percussion. She played with Prince back in the day, and we're just looking forward for her to grace our stage at the historic Paramount Theater. Also, the movie, the story, the icon, reggae icon Bob Marley, we're going to be showing that starting February 14th. So we're back rolling for the season. Movie shows, we got graduations booked, I mean, we're just, everything's rocking and rolling, per se. Also, need your support on fireworks resolution tonight. Fireworks are going to be on July 3rd this year, and that's all I have for tonight.
Any question for Maria? All right, Maria, thank you.
Thank you.
Fire chief.
Good evening. January was a busy month for us. We did 107 total alarms. That was up 30-plus from last year and 45 from the year before, so January was a busy month. I know Alderman Kleiner asked me last month about an update for Fireman Joe. Still don't have one for you, but past Chief Barber is working closely with her still. He's actually going there. I talked to him last night. He's going there Thursday, and next month I will have an update. Downtown, I know the marble stone was placed. It's been there, so we're just waiting for her to finish so we can get it placed. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for fire chief? All right. Thank you, chief. Please, chief.
Good evening. Just want to report that or notify the council that the speed signs that you requested have come in, so I'll work with Commissioner Twill on getting them placed where you would like them. I know we discussed them. I know Andrew, or Alderman Green, was influential behind one of them, so I want to make sure that you could pass that along to him. Other than that, just a couple quick items. We recently had four police officers graduate from the Police Academy. They'll be joining our ranks. They'll be working through the field training program, which will be another about five, six months before they actually get placed on the road by themselves. We hired two additional officers that'll be starting with us at the end of this month, and we'll be looking to work with the Police Commission to fill some other vacancies that we have. Additionally, I just want to take a moment just to recognize the men and women that work for the Police Department. They've really been working hard, doing a lot of great work, making some really good arrests, following up on some crimes, and really bringing things to a conclusion. So I just want to publicly recognize them and thank them for their work that they do day in and day out. Other than that, I have nothing unless...
Alderman Johnson?
Just one quick question. The signs you referred to, are they portable or are they going to be permanent installations?
These are the permanent ones. These will be just like the ones that are in Manhagen in California, West Main, Waianae.
Thank you.
How many did we get in?
Three.
Three. All right. Anyone else? We had a valedictorian too, didn't we?
We did, yes. That was in the media. One of our new recruits, our new graduates, Elijah Hodges, was named valedictorian of the last Police Academy class.
Congratulations. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
DPW Commissioner.
Good evening, all. Do some city business. Is that okay?
You're on a roll today.
The water reservoir levels, Alderman Massey, they're full at 100%, so we're in good shape.
Thank you.
Or drinking water reservoirs, that is. Water storage tank, Highland Avenue, we had a problem with the contractor for their insurance lapsing, and they just gave us another certificate of insurance. Every time their insurance lapses, we have to do a stop work order. So that is delaying the project, unfortunately, which will delay the project, the starting of the demo for high Barney tank. So it's all connected together because we don't want to stay out, keep our water system without many or more than one water storage tank out of service for painting or for replacement. So hopefully, middle of this month, Highland Avenue will be completed, the tank, once the tank is completed and tested and online, then we will start with the high Barney. Mountain Avenue, the work is stopped because of the weather, but they will resume again early spring. Traffic operations. It's moving along, obviously, very well. I just want to mention something important for the public when they are using the new pedestrian crossing in there. When you are standing at the intersection where you have the lights for the pedestrian crossing, you must push the button in there for it to activate and to allow you to pass through. Don't just sit, you know, you can't just stand there and wait for the green signal on the pedestrian lights to allow you to walk in. You must push the button. And the reason behind it is we want to dedicate as much time as possible for the vehicle traffic. So if there is no pedestrian traffic in there, we're just, it's never going to be green. So you must push the pedestrian button if you want to cross a road or a street, and that's to make the operation much more efficient. I'll talk more about the operation later on and coordination between traffic lights and so on. But one really has to drive through down, through North Street. You can see the nice thermally-applied pedestrian crossing, the brick-looking pedestrian crossing, and you can see the new traffic lights, pedestrian crossing lights, and without the old ones, the ones, the old ones were taken out. And it's really very nice, very impressive intersection looking right now if you drive through it with the new curbs and sidewalks and granite curb and so on, and ADA accessibility. We have the water main breaks. Obviously, you've been getting the messages for it. I think Rick tonight, he'll update us about what message service we will be using and so on. In lieu of next cell, he'll talk about it, how to download it and so on. We applied for two more grants under Bridge New York, one for replacement of the Janong, Janong Street Bridge by the intersection of Sprague Avenue. There's a bridge in there that we've been trying to replace it for years, and we applied for a grant for that, and also applied for a second grant under Bridge New York for replacement of a culvert on Manhagen Avenue between California and West Main. There's a big culvert in there that we are very much interested in replacing it and making it a little bit larger. And before the parking garage, the mayor and I, we had a conversation, we had a meeting with the engineers about the design of the parking garage across from the Paramount, and the project is moving along very well. And that's that. And council resolution, oh, before you tonight, there's a council resolution for the municipal solid waste for the hauling. Every year, we go through it, and this year, they are requesting an increase of about 3.4% in the tipping fee, which is in line with the county contract because that's how we do it. We use the county contract in order to make, to sign it, in order to use IWS for our garbage, hauling, and disposal. So it's still a very attractive price with the increase, in spite of the increase. And with that, I will conclude. Do you have any questions for me?
Alderman Johnson?
Without going into executive session, when you mentioned the people, their insurance lapses, and every time it lapses, you have to have a stop work, is there a reason that they can't maintain their insurance?
Yeah, they haven't paid, they don't pay the premium and...
Well, I would imagine, but never mind.
No, honestly, it's as simple as that. They don't pay the premium, so the payment through, they have, they have a payment from us, like for $250,000 or something, we have to pay them. Then we have to issue a real manual check payable to both them and the insurance carriers so that the contractor will sign it, and the insurance carrier will sign it, and then they will restore their insurance. Hopefully, we got like, we got maybe a week and a half, two weeks left, and then they'll be out of, they're good work, they do good work. It's just their management, you know, and...
Okay. Enough said. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. I don't know if I should ask you or ask the mayor this, but the ONW, it says we have, I thought at the board estimate, another evaluation for Fusco Engineering for the historic assessment. Can you explain a little bit about what that's?
Part of the, Alderman Witt had called me earlier in the day about, about the same issue. The financing for the ONW is pretty complicated, as you all know. We have about $14 million in grants that are already committed. The project has ballooned to about $23, $24 million. And before we can move to the next step, we're, and this is through community development, Maria Caitlin primarily is doing a lot of the work on it, with the engineering firm out of Syracuse. I don't, is it?
CNS.
CNS, out of Syracuse. Fusco is on the job with the CNS out of Syracuse. And in order to do, to apply for the new market tax credits and historic tax credits, there was additional work that needed to be done on the application. We're receiving some positive responses already back on the new market tax credit. We anticipate a positive response on the historic tax credit. That will be the gap filler for the ONW, and once those confirmations are, both are received, we will be able to award the first round of the remediation and the stabilization of the building. So it's additional work related to the applications for new market and historic tax credits.
Okay. Thank you, man.
You're welcome.
Okay. Superintendent Recreation?
Good evening, everyone. Before you, our annual report that everyone received the copy. Next meeting will be the quiz on what's on inside, so make sure you study. Special thank you to everyone who participated and showed up to our Winter Festival this Saturday. It was a great turnout. Special thank you to Mother Nature, who actually blessed us with a beautiful day and lots of sunshine, even though a portion of our ice rink kind of gets a little melted and soggy, but we made do. Thank you to the Lions Club for co-sponsoring this event with us, DJ Echo, who last minute was available to DJ for the event, Salvation Army for giving out the hot chocolate that my taste buds are still just starting to come back from being burned, but it was delicious. To the Fire Department for maintaining and watching over the fire. Thank you, and for allowing the kids to go throughout the truck. That's a special thank you. And always the Police Department, who is always at our event, events mingling with the community and talking to all the families. Sproch Street, our playground was just installed. The mulch will be going down tomorrow. Hopefully, the guy was out sick who was doing the mulch, but should be laid out tomorrow and should be open to the public by the weekend. There's some cement in the posts that are just waiting to dry, but our Sproch Street playground is installed, and we just hired one of our new full-time maintenance employees, Brendan Beirstow. I'd like to welcome him to our department. He worked with us part-time. He's a younger guy, but we're looking forward to training him and getting him and having him be here with us for many, many years to come. Any questions?
Alderman Johnson?
One question. Weather permitting, what's the official closing date of the ice rink?
We're hoping to go through mid-March. When we get like these 40 degrees direct sunlight, it does start to melt, but as long as it's freezing overnight, we could still have sessions into the evening. We do have that one screen that is up, and John Bianchi is actually the one who sewed that and got that all sewed up. So that was the test run to see if that works, and that sun, that screen does make a difference. So once John gets back on the sewing machine that he's using from a local vendor, he's going to sew up the rest and get them up and installed.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Alderman Witt?
Thank you. Do you have, can you share any idea like when spring registration for the programs is going to begin for different things?
Yes. We are actually currently working with and in training with our new online registration with Civic Rec. It is intense, very, very intense. Just the initial layout and learning, the whole system is very intense, very, very hard. I feel like I'm a computer programmer. But we're hoping we can start everything end of March with that, once we figure out how to fully set it up on our own and run all our test registrations. We're hoping for end of March to have all of our spring programs out and up. And we're, we have a meeting with the school district February 12th that talk about facility usage. So at that meeting, we're hopefully going to pick their brain on what facilities are available for the summer for our camps. Hopefully, the school district could have a spot for us in one of their buildings for the summer for our sports camp.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you. Our assessor?
Good evening.
Okay.
I just wanted to remind everyone that taxable status date is quickly approaching, so all exemptions have to be in my office by March 1st, and that includes the firefighter exemption that you guys will be voting on this evening, and it also includes our seniors who have to renew their exemption each year. We're still waiting for about 70 of them to come in, so it's quite a lot for the next two weeks. So hopefully, people start coming in. We have some sunshine during the day, so it's a good time to come out. All right? And that's it. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
City clerk?
Good evening. Thank you. As Commissioner Twill alluded to earlier, the city has implemented a new emergency alert system. It's called Civic Ready. We are no longer using Nixle. You can register online at the city website, MiddletownNY.gov. Just click on the box that says Alerts. It's easiest to do it from your home computer, though it is also accessible on your mobile devices. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to myself at the City Clerk's office, 845-346-4168. I don't call myself often. Other than that, I just want to thank the city. We took 15 kids to Albany today as part of the mayor's youth council. These are students from the school district and from some of the surrounding municipalities, and we met with our local elected officials and talked about the importance of funding for youth programs. Thank you to Senator Scoofus for hosting us and Assemblywoman Gunther. It was a great day. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for the city clerk? All right. Remarks of Alderman? Alderman Massey?
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Witt?
Thank you very much. Covered a couple things already, but I just wanted to, Jacob mentioned about the traffic lights and what the intersections look like. I don't think ever in my life I've ever looked at traffic lights more than I am right now. I mean, obviously, you look at the light part, but then when you see the way the whole thing looks, just fantastic. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you very much.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. I want to thank Rayland and everyone else involved in the Lions Club with Winterfest. It was a really, really fun event going on, and really, the kids seemed to be enjoying it a lot. Once again, it's February. This is Black History Month, and I do think it's a really important part of our history to understand, so please take advantage of programs that are offered. We will not be having a second award constituents meeting this Monday. We're not doing February, January, and February, and we will start again in March. I want to wish Andrew Green, my co-second award Alderman, wish him well in a speedy recovery. The whole family has COVID, and it's a reminder that COVID is still out there, so be careful and pay attention. Have one quick thing. This was a headline from the record on February 5th. If you still read the record online, you know, USA Today, and the headline was "New York Gas Prices Rose From Last Week." See how much prices increased here. Well, the price of gas this summer was $3.86 a gallon on the average was the high, and the low on January 22nd was $3.11. It had gone up all of 4 cents from its winter's low, and that prompted the headline, "New York Gas Prices Rose From Last Week." So I would just skip the headlines, and I don't know where you get local news, maybe Mid Hudson News, but that kind of thing is just so disappointing to see. It tells you when hedge funds control the media, that's what we deal with. Thank you.
Alderman Ray?
Sorry. Missed the response to the other name. Good evening. I don't really have anything tonight. We had a very long, it felt like, January, but the weather's been cooperating to date, but we don't know what's coming. I know it's supposed to get cold, and I've heard that snow might return to our region, so it's just a friendly reminder, if it happens before another meeting, that if you have snow, buy your fire hydrant, shovel it out, and be mindful of your walks because the kids have to get to their bus stops safely as well. That's all I have.
Alderman Johnson?
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Jean Francois?
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Tobin?
Nothing this evening.
All right. New business.
Good evening. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt to declare a recreation of parks vehicle as surplus.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Ray, aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to enter an agreement with Young Explosives for the 2024 Firework Show.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois authorizing an increase in tipping fees for interstate waste services.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin to accept a $73,051 grant from the Division of Criminal Justice Services for the purchase of law enforcement equipment.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Jean Francois. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray authorizing an acceptance of a $6,500 grant from Senator James Scoofus for operating expenses for the National Night Out Against Crime.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to enter an agreement with Cherry Row Technologies for IT support for 2024.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to allocate ARPA funding for the RBT consultation fees for ARPA administration.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Jean Francois. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to amend an agreement with Fusco Engineering for additional work for the historical tax credit process on the ONW station project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to amend a recently enacted Chapter 438 Tobacco, Huca, Vaping Establishment Licenses of the City Code.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion?
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin authorizing the lending of portable lights to the Otisville Lions Club for the 34th Annual Otisville Country Fair.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Green. I'm sorry. Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray authorizing a funding, a three-year commitment to enhance the enlarged city school district of Middletown's application to host the New York State Boys' Soccer Championship.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray, seconded by Alderman Witt.
No, no, no. Sorry, I jumped.
We have a second. Alderman Johnson. All right. Discussion. Alderman Witt?
Thank you. As an employee of the Middletown School District, who likely would be working at these events as an employee, I will be abstaining from this. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Council President, we need to amend the resolution to include language authorizing the mayor to sign the contracts related to this.
I get a motion to amend?
So moved.
Ray and Johnson? Add language. Anyone else have any issues? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean, Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt?
Abstain.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries.